I'd like to take this time and welcome you to our meeting. Tonight is July 16th. Tonight we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Sean Schulte. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as we work through the agenda tonight, we ask for your wisdom. We thank you for the many blessings you have provided and for guarding over our city. Father, may all that we do and say bring glory and honor to you. May the city of Jefferson always be a city of righteousness and goodness, a city pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off with roll call, please.
Bray?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Lubert?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Pope?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
We have a quorum this evening. Next, I'd like to introduce some of our scouts that I think are with us. If you're in the scouts, would you please stand? I'm gonna do this in heath order. Young man, why don't you come up here first to the podium? And tell us who you are, what troop you're from? You may have to lower that a little bit, it just kinda bends. There you go. What's your name?
My name is Zach Burkemper.
Okay. Well, welcome Zach. What troop and what school are you from?
I'm from Troop Six and I'm from IC, Mackey Conception.
And what badge will you be working on this evening?
Citizenship in the Community.
Alright, well great. Well Zach, thank you for being here. I see you got your dad with ya. Scouts do a lot within our community. Please come back as often as you like. I'm sure there's several different badges you can get within the city. You might even get like an attorney badge someday like Drew did whenever, when he was younger. Thanks for being here. Okay, come on up. Or actually, you have the cordless mics, never mind. Go ahead.
I'm Mark Lamb and I'm from Troop Six IC School. And I'm working on citizenship in the community.
Okay.
I'm Joe Christian and I'm from Troop Six Mackey Conception School and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
Alright, thank you for being-- are your parents here?
Yeah, got my mom.
Alright, why don't you have mom and whatnot? Hi, Ms. Renee, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Renee gets the plug for Central Travel. Official agency of the First Family. And your parents are?
Hello.
Oh, okay, great. Alright, well, thank you very much for being here. It's great to have you guys here. Mr. Scrivner?
I saw another young man come in, I'm wondering if he might be a scout sitting over here? In the back row?
Are you in scout, sir? Oh, come on up here. Sorry, I didn't see ya. Okay. Coming up here to the podium. What's your name, young man?
Poker Watkins.
Well, it's nice to meet you. What troop are you with?
Eleven.
Eleven, and that's where?
First Baptist Church.
First Baptist, okay. How long have you been in scouts?
Since February.
Great. And what badge will you be working on tonight?
Citizenship in the Community.
Alright, well, thank you for being here. How about a round of applause for our scouts for being here tonight? I need that mic, sir? Or should I just take this one? Janice is afraid that I'm gonna interview her right now. I would like to tell you about a special guest we have here this evening. And that is, if she could come up, Dr. Carolyn Mahoney. Throughout her career, Carolyn has positively touched so many lives, obviously, within our community. She became Lincoln's 18th president in 2005. Dr. Mahoney plugged into Jefferson City soon after getting here, helping with many, many projects. Some of which you'll see listed on the overhead screens above. Darla, and we had a table with Carolyn. As you can see, her local affiliations are many. And right at the end of the banquet, she announced that she had just had a grandson. And she also serves on many boards in a national capacity. And Darla said, "You know what? From the first time that I met Dr. Mahoney to our most recent meetings, I have the utmost I bet she's gonna retire." So, good luck with the grandchildren. Next, we have our public hearings. respect for her and what she's accomplished here in Jefferson City. And we'll go into the first bill that is associated with that. She's definitely done a great job leading Lincoln University as their president, and We'll have third reading of 2012-41. I think really leading them closer and Jefferson City closer to each other.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving an amended final PUD
An excellent job, very, very well done.
plan for property located at 2304 Lorenzo Green Drive, described as part of the southeast
The city of Jefferson will miss you Carolyn, but we do have a momento here for ya. If you could come up?
quarter of Section 22, 24, and part of the northeast quarter of Section 25, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
What we have here is a key to the city that we'll present you with. Alright, tell us more. Janice McMillan?
Thank you, Mayor.
It says, "In recognition of outstanding service to the people of Jefferson City from
This application came before the Planning and Zoning Commission in June, June 14th,
2005 to 2012."
and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended it be approved. This applicant is requesting an amendment of the final PUD plan to expand the permitted uses that are allowed for this property. The uses that were approved previously are limited to florists, greenhouse, plant nursery, outdoor storage, and sales of landscaping material. The proposed PUD amendment expands this list of permitted uses by adding all of the permitted uses of the C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. The most immediate effect will be to add a hair salon in this location. As I mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this application be approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Janice? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anyone to speak in favor of this change in this PUD for this property? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, we'll go into council debate. Any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
That motion is passed. Next, we'll move on to minutes and reports filed here at City Hall. Historic preservation of March 13th, the May 12th financial reports, the June 12th animal shelter selection or section, monthly report? Should that be selection report maybe? But, I guess we'll figure it out. Section, okay. Council Committee on Admin on June 6th, and the Police Personnel Board on June 7th. Next, we'll have council committee reports, first chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll, the Admin Committee.
Thank you. The Administration Committee met June 27th. The topic was the smoking issue at the Housing Authority property, which was in response to people who came to the council meeting to complain about that issue. We basically decided that the Housing Authority Board should take that issue up. We've asked them to place that on their next agenda for discussion, and the Housing Authority Board will meet tomorrow morning, July 17th, at 7:30 a.m. at the Housing Authority. And we'll have an update at our next administration meeting. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, July 25th, at 8:00 a.m. We will discuss the CVB contract, the ordinance expanding the Electrical Board, and the noise ordinance. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Carrie. Moving on to finance, Councilman Sean Kuhn.
The city received its July sales tax in the amount of $798,000, which is approximately $158,000 less than projected for July. November through July overage is $141,000 in the general fund. Our next meeting, which will actually be a budget committee of the whole, is Monday, July 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. across the hall.
Thank you, Sean. Moving on to public safety, Dr. Brian Pope.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no report since our last council meeting, however, our next meeting will be Thursday, August the 2nd, following our pre-council meeting.
Alrighty, thank you, Brian. Moving on to public works and planning, Bob Scrivener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't held a meeting since our last report, however, our next meeting will be Thursday, July the 19th, at 7:30 a.m. across the hall. Agenda items include permissive use of right-of-way for a yard light on 630 Broadway Street. Old business will include curbs at Tree Wells on High Street. That's an issue that was brought up at the last meeting and tabled until this coming meeting. And then we'll also have a discussion of permissive use of right-of-way for signage at 811 Monroe. And Westview Height Sanitary Sewer Improvement Report by Eric Seaman. You'll notice there are only four items on our agenda. That's the shortest agenda we've had in months.
That's good.
You better get there early, we may be finished before you get there.
Alrighty. Anything else to add there, Bob?
No, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Under liaison reports, I know that Sean Schulte also has a report on, I believe it's Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to report on a couple of items from the July 10th Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Both of these items have been reported on in the newspaper. I'm very pleased to report that the Commission approved and issued a request for qualifications and expressions of interest from architectural firms to assist them with designing construction of an indoor multipurpose recreation facility. The Commission contemplates entering into a two-phase contract for professional services with the selected architectural firm on the following basis. Phase one is development of two to three preliminary conceptual design floor plans for commission consideration culminating in preparation of a schematic design for the selected conceptual plan, verification of square footage, preparation of estimates of capital outlay, and total project costs. Assistant evaluation of one to three pre-selected sites to accommodate the chosen schematic design and adjust total project scope construction phasing to match the budget. At the conclusion of phase one, depending upon the findings and recommendations, the Commission may, at its option, elect to proceed with phase two. Phase two is preparation of final plans, specifications, and construction documents for bidding the project, evaluation of bids received, project inspection, review and approval of pay requests, and other customary architectural responsibilities on a project of this nature. The second item, based on the recommendations of the Recreation Services Committee, the Commission voted to eliminate the competitive baseball and softball leagues. The competitive program started approximately five years ago at the request of several coaches. Team participation has fluctuated from year to year and is trending downward. The recreational programs, however, will continue. Staff and the Commission both agree to keep doing what they do best, and that is recreational programs. Thank you.
Sean, I have a question, not to put you on the spot, but when you say competitive baseball and softball, what is competitive? I mean, for a lot of parents out there watching tonight, competitive could be, you know, the fourth grade deal. So, what do you mean by competitive?
Well, within the recreational league, the Parks and Rec always try to do things where they don't necessarily keep score, and they're just out there to promote the skills needed for that particular program. The competitive league is just that, they keep score, it, and they, the teams participate in various leagues and also tournaments, and so that's, the main difference is it truly is competitive league.
Okay.
Most of the time, you have to try out for the teams, etc.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions for Sean on that, or anyone else on those committees? Thanks, everyone. Moving on, no appointments by the mayor tonight. Moving on to number 10A, Mr. Steve Schleeder is here and has a guest with him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I'd like to introduce Dale Siebernick, who's a partner with the Company of Everston Company. He's here to present the 2011 city audit, the CAFR, and to go over that and entertain any questions.
Good evening. I'm a little taller than the Boy Scouts. My name is Dale Siebernick, I'm the partner in charge of the city audit for the year that was October of 2011. And it's my understanding that each of you received a copy of the audit report so that you would have time to review that, if you had any questions. I will try to keep it somewhat brief. The main thing, I will turn to what's called the Financial Section tab, if you have your copy there with you, or if you're looking at it on your iPads or whatever. The opinion letter is what is probably the most important portion of that, it's on page 13. And just to refer to that, kind of in a short way, it's what's called a clean opinion. And that's what most individuals are interested in, is what is the formal opinion on the city operations. In that section also are a lot of the financial information. The report's about 130-plus pages long, so I don't think you want me to go through it in great detail this evening. The Management Discussion and Analysis, that's a general section that's actually put together by city staff. And then after that follows the financial information, government-wide type statements, which is a city as a whole presented in one format. Get into notes, disclosures, things of that nature. Then there's statistical section, which talks a lot about the city, different sources of revenue, property taxes, sales taxes, large employers, things of that nature. And then the last section is the federal awards section. And what that is, is that's required by the federal government. When we take federal funds from them, they do set down certain guidelines. And actually, they control the way we actually do the audit, and how it's done. When you take federal funds over certain dollar amounts, then they will tell you how you actually do the audit of the organization, how often it's done. And that section reports the performance on the funds, how many dollars you actually received, and if there are any findings in that section. And that's to the end of it, kind of general section. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions at all? Alright, thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you to the city staff.
You guys do a great job. I look through that every year, and it's a lot of reading, but that's the whole idea, and compliments to your company for helping us.
Thank you.
Next, we have on the agenda, Nathan Nicholas, has a longtime person, that was in this council before. Tonight, we have former mayor Dwayne Schryman, and along with him is Kathy Harness. Welcome.
Thank you.
Dwayne Schryman, 603 Ternbury Drive, Jefferson City, Missouri. I think, am I supposed to say that, the address and stuff?
Not this time, but it's just habit, I guess.
I'm Kathy Harness, and I am a resident in the area to be annexed. That will be on the ballot on August 7th.
Kathy and I are here just to speak with you and to anyone watching. We wanted to come and speak in favor of this annexation. I currently live in the city, so I'm speaking from the perspective of a resident of the city. Kathy lives outside the city and is speaking as a resident of the area to be annexed. We encourage everyone to vote yes on this annexation. There are so many positives from being in the city. So, to talk from that perspective, some of the main goals, of course, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but the professional police department, the professional fire department. I know sometimes people don't like planning and zoning and regulations, but controlled growth, regulated growth, which is offered once the property is annexed, is so important to make sure the property develops in an appropriate way and that neighbors get along, essentially. In some of this area, of course, you know, some people say, "Well, why don't we, why don't you allow people to voluntarily annex property? Why are you trying to make them annex?" Well, voluntary annexation is a good idea, except that a lot of times, I may want to come into the city, my neighbor may not want to come in, the next neighbor may want to, and you would just have piecemeal additions to the city, so obviously, that doesn't work. It's interesting, and I congratulate the city on the plan of intent that, and I encourage any citizens to see that, it's on the city's website, that talks about the benefits of the annexation. But if you look at one of the prime examples of a residence that's on that website, and in the plan of intent talks about a residence that has a value of $250,000, that actually, a non-city resident that owns a home like that, that then comes into the city, will be paying approximately the same amount of tax dollars, and in fact, it's just a fraction less. Because by coming into the city, there are savings on the wastewater, there are savings on fire district taxes, and there are several other savings. I know there are some businesses in the area that perhaps may be an opponent of this annexation, but I think it's appropriate that those businesses who are benefited by the community, and they certainly are, because they're close, and we are their customers. They're benefited by the city, and they are in competition with businesses that are in the city. And so I think it is appropriate that those businesses are taxed similarly to those businesses with whom they compete. And those businesses now will have the police protection, the fire protection, and they'll have the regulatory protection that comes with being in the city. So, we're encouraging all folks to vote yes on this. The election is, what, August 7th, I believe, so?
We did have a meeting in the spring for the residents of Meadows by the Lake that were not in the annexed, that are in the annexed to proposed annexation area. We had a nice turnout, we had presentations by the city. And I have not heard any negative feedback, or people who really are not, or who are opposed to this annexation. And I too would just like to urge both city residents and those in the annexed area to vote yes on August 7th.
We'd be glad to answer any questions.
Alright, does anyone have any questions for Kathy or Dwayne? I want to thank you both for being here tonight. Annexation's obviously an important part of our city. As we talked across the hall the other day, looking back in the mid-'50s, we were basically about halfway up Missouri Boulevard, and that was about it. So I think annexation in a small piece, as this is a good way to go. And thank you guys for being here and support.
And Mayor, you'll learn after a while, one of the best titles is "former" in front of the mayor.
Okay. Yeah, Landwear told me about that the other day on the radio, so, alright. Next, we have, Councilman Pope has some different guests tonight. Many, as I see, are former councilmen. Gentlemen, welcome back.
It makes us former different, councilmen. We're all different. Good evening. I am here to offer up the Citizens Committee for Prop Two, and also to give you a little bit of an update. We had a gathering this past Wednesday, very successful, I think. The firefighters, and families, and friends that had been out knocking on doors and handing out flyers, brought back very favorable results. They were getting good comments from the community. So that was gratifying to hear. So, we will continue, and all the way up to August 7th, and hope for good things at that time. I have a list of our committee, and as I read these names, I would hope that you would stand up. You don't have to if you don't want to, but the list consists of myself, and if you have forgotten, my name's Mike Harvey, and Dr. Pope, and we co-chair this deal. We also have Scott Hamlin, Carlos Graham, Dan Clint, former Councilman Dan Clint, Gary Day, Richard Kuhn, Roger Dudenhefer, Bernie Fectal, Dave Griffith, John Shien, and Senator Mike Kehoe. We're very, very grateful that we have these folks that are willing to lend their names and their talents, so that we can proceed on to August 7th, and hopefully with great success. So, I would thank you, and here is your Prop Two Committee. Any questions?
You got pretty good heath out there, Harvey. Once again, it looks like Fectal's the tallest, so I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe a basketball thing or something down the road.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. You know, it takes a lot to stand up for different proposals, and I think it takes a lot to stand up, especially in person. Some people might use a radio pulpit for what they want to say, but I think it's important to be up in front of the people and telling them how you feel about the issues, and you guys are definitely doing that by going door-to-door. Of course, you and your families. Any questions or comments for Mike or the committee? Okay, moving on, Dr. Pope again, two for two.
Good evening, I'm Susan Holloway. We live at 109 Kingsbury Court, and we are here in support of Proposition Two. On May 20th, I'm sorry, this is hard for me to say, we had returned home from being at a graduation, and Galen suffered a lethal arrhythmia. Luckily, I was in the same room, was able to call 911 and begin CPR. Had it not been for the rapid response of the fire department, he would not be here today. According to our cardiologists, less than 1% of the people who suffer these at home don't make it. But because I happened to be in the room when it happened, and because the fire department was there in four minutes and 28 seconds with the proper equipment and the proper training, he lived. So, I can't imagine not being in support of this proposition.
I don't remember a lot of the fun that Susan and the emergency medical people had. When it happened, I don't remember a thing until the following Wednesday. But I do want to stress how important it is for the firefighters and the emergency medical team to have the equipment they need at a moment's notice. The response time, when I heard about it, really surprised me, four minutes and 28 seconds. If at that time, the ambulance, we'd had to wait on the ambulance to provide those services, it would have taken at least twice as long, and maybe a little bit longer, and my outcome would likely have been different. But I can't see any way that we can't feel very positive about the professional people that you have here in the Jefferson City Fire Department, and the skills, and the education, and the training that they go through. So I think it's very important to support this proposition, to give them more funds to continue doing that, and to build the services that they provide for us.
Just to make a point, Galen, you said that you think that the ambulance would have been more than twice as long?
Well, this was--
As the, as what it took the firefighters or first responders to get there, is that right?
Yeah. The reason I say that is, I've been told, after the fire truck, the first responders got there, the ambulance, I'm assuming it came from Capital Regional at that time, this happened in 2007, and they, I think they had shocked me a couple of times and had me going again by the time the ambulance got there. So, they got there, put me on a gurney, and wheeled me to Capital Regional, where they did a great job stabilizing that.
Okay. Any questions for the Holloways? I want to thank, I obviously personally know you both, want to thank you for being here. You know, being able to testify on such a life-threatening issue is obviously emotional, but I think this is about emotion. This is about life and death, and what extra response time can do within our community. So thank you for being here tonight for Prop Two.
Absolutely.
Alright. Moving on, we have announcements by the mayor, council, and staff. And at this point in time, I'd like to call on Officer Chuck Walker. Thanks again, gentlemen, for being here. Schryman, there's a test at the end of this. Officer Walker, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna allow ex-councilman Mr. Griffin to come up, because he's also on the chair with me, with the Kiwanis Club. So I'm also gonna allow him to speak on behalf of some programs that we're doing here in Jeff City, to not only better our community, but also enrich our kids. I've worked with Kiwanis for the last seven years in fundraising and a lot of other ventures.
responders got there, the ambulance, I'm assuming it came from Capital Regional at that time, this happened in 2007, and they, I think they had shocked me a couple of times and had me going again by the time the ambulance got there. So, they got there, put me on a gurney, and wheeled me to Capital Regional, where they did a great job stabilizing that.
Okay. Any questions for the Holloways? I want to thank, I obviously personally know you both, want to thank you for being here, you know, being able to testify on such a life-threatening issue is obviously emotional, but I think this is about emotion. This is about life and death, and what extra response time can do within our community. So thank you for being here tonight for Prop 2.
Absolutely.
All right. Moving on, we have announcements by the mayor, council, and staff, and at this point in time, I'd like to call on Officer Chuck Walker. Thanks again, gentlemen, for being here. Shrimin', there's a test at the end of this. Officer Walker, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm going to allow ex-councilman Mr. Griffin to come up, because he's also on the chair with me, with the Kiwanis Club, so I'm also going to allow him to speak on behalf of some programs that we're doing here in Jeff City, to not only better our community, but also enrich our kids. I've worked with Kiwanis for the last seven years, in fundraising and a lot of other ventures here in Jeff City. As you well know, I have basketball programs with Jeff City through the Police Department on behalf of Chief Roger Schrader and his staff, that allowed me to go out into the community to better serve our kids. So, a program that we've just started is going to end up dealing with four entities here in Jeff City. One of those is with Dr. Pope, with Magical Smiles. When you're looking at young people in our community, that every kid that comes up to you and looks at you straight in your face, you want that smile. Also, when that kid's going to school every year, with our backpack giveaway, and some things that we're doing to enrich these kids in staying in school and everything else, we're also going to do a backpack giveaway that I've done with the Samaritan Center for several years. Also, with another group, when you look at Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, and the things that they're doing here in our community, the majority of the time, excuse me, when the Police Department responds to those areas, we're the first persons of contact, whether it's a child, whether it's an adult, or whoever. So when you look at that, look at the whole picture. Then also, when you look at the Jeff City Daycare Facility, that had some financial problems here in our community, but it's in the heart of our city. When you go over and look at the Housing Authority, which is part of the city of Jefferson, but then also, it's part of us, when we're changing the lives of kids here in our community, and what we need to do to better them and enrich them, and when you're talking about things, excuse me, when it deals with secondary education, growth, and potential. So, as you well know, these are the programs that I end up doing, also on behalf of Kiwanis, but with also Chief Roger Schrader, to allow me to do these for us. So, with that, I'm also let Mr. Griffin speak a little bit here, too.
Well, this committee is called Children Priority 1, and children in our community are a resource. They are, we're going to be our future. And our Kiwanis Club has been dedicated to serving those children in our community and the community of the world, one child at a time. And so with this luau that we're going to be having, this fundraiser, if you will, is going to be able to support these programs, and we just wanted to try and get the word out, and want to thank you for your time.
And one thing I'd like to say, too, me, myself, I raised $3,000, that's 60 tickets, which I sold in two weeks. My goal is to sell at least within the next two days, probably another 30 tickets, so I can achieve my goal. So, I'm not soliciting any of you, because that's illegal, and the chief's here, but if you decide that you want to participate, come out to this venue. You can also get ahold of me, also one of the other committee members, which is Holly Jackwin, but then also, Mr. Griffin.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Dave, welcome back. Any questions for these fine individuals? Carrie?
Thank you.
I'll buy a raffle ticket, and I would challenge anyone else on the council to do the same. Thank you.
Sounds good. I think that goes without saying. Okay, anyone else on that subject? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Good projects, and a lot of really good stuff in our community. A lot of communities right now don't have annexations and Prop 2, and people like the Holloways willing to come forward. So I think it just shows that as a city, we're really becoming progressive as we do move forward. Nothing tonight under 12. At this point in time, we would ask or entertain a motion for the consent agenda to be approved. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll have bills over $50,000, which is zero. We'll have bills introduced, first reading, 2012-43.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Travis Hodge-Hauling LLC to construct the Morrow View Road sanitary sewer extension.
Roger Schwartz, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. This is a project to extend sewer to an area that was annexed into the city in 2002. It's on the far eastern side of our city, next to the Morrow River. The overhead, you can't quite see the bottom of it, I see, there we go. The green line is running along the Morrow River and goes to the new Walmart facility that was built here in Jefferson City. The red line is what we're proposing to build at this time. It would serve a total of 17 properties that are along this Morrow View Extension. We did open bids on this project, and the low bid out of nine bidders was from this Travis Hall, Travis, excuse me, Travis Hodge-Hauling, out of Lakos Ark, Missouri, at $144,835. We got great bids on this project, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions of Roger this evening? Seeing, oh, sorry. Councilman Scrivener.
Just a quick question, Roger. I remember this coming before the Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, but it seems to me like it was probably close to a year ago, or maybe even a little longer. Was there, what was the holdup on this? Because I know we approved at that time.
Right. What had happened was, we had actually taken bids at that time, but one of the properties we were not able to secure to get the easement for this construction, and it has taken us up to this time, so we didn't feel that we could no longer hold that contractor to those bids, so the project was rebid, and it actually came in $11,000 less this time than it did that year ago.
I just, I guess the reason I ask that question is because I kind of wanted the public to realize that sometimes what seems like takes an awful long time for the city to act on some things, it's not always the city's fault. Sometimes homeowners and landowners and so forth have to cooperate in order for us to be able to perform the services that people want to have done. Thank you, Roger.
Okay. Any other questions of Roger? Moving on, we'll have first reading of 2012-44.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with New World Systems for software and interface, mobile client software, CMR JIS Police Department.
And to tell us more is Chief Schrader. Evening, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, this is another step in what has come to be known as our MDT grant, that's the regional grant in central Missouri, involving 15 to 18 cities and counties. This step authorizes the purchase of software, which would allow for the interfacing of our electronic ticketing system, which originates in our patrol cars, with our records section within our building. From that point, it allows the electronic transfer to our court clerks and the municipal court system. The funding originates from two sources. One is the, that COPS Technology Grant, I believe it's the second year of three years, funds that would be provided, and our sales taxi monies, particularly the part that commits to information systems improvements. The total would be $37,648, and staff recommends approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief? Bob?
How far along are you on upgrading and installing this technology? How much more might we expect before this project, if you will, electrification or electronification of the, this process?
I wish I could give you a direct answer, but the federal government allows for extensions. So although the funding, or partial funding for this segment of it, is from the second year of the grant, we're also into third-year funding. So we kind of have an overlap. I would say if one looks at the entire process, and the many cities and counties that are benefiting with this, we're starting to see the end of it, considering the commitment of our third-year funds, and beginning to purchase a lot of those items for our central Missouri region with third-year funds. We're closer to being done than we are at the beginning. Kind of a vague answer, but that's the best I can do without going back and talking to our fiscal affairs people, and really being able to identify exactly what is yet to be funded, because we know exactly, there's no ambiguity to that. We know exactly what we've committed to, but I can't tell you the percentage of the completion of those things, but I could determine that with a little bit of work.
Let me, if I may, ask a question in a little different way, because I didn't ask it very well. I guess what I'm wondering, Chief, is as far as us moving from a paper environment to an electronic environment, I know we've done several things. We've put computers in the car, we're now doing electronic ticketing, we've got the technology to read license plates as we move, and I know there can always be new technology come along, but how close are we to being at a point where we've made that conversion from old technology to newer, old era to a new era?
You've probably given me most of the answer, and that is that there's a constant evolution of new technology, but I think we're pretty close to achieving what we thought or intended to achieve when we began this process about five years ago. Of course, there's always more to come, but I think we've about, we're about to achieve what we set out to achieve.
And would that be in all of our patrol cars now? Are all of our cars equipped equally?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of Chief? Okay, moving on to bills pending, we've already dealt with 2012-41. We'll have a third and final reading of 2012-42.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the Adopt a Street program.
Janice?
Thank you, Mayor. The Adopt a Street program was started in 2011 as a way for the city to partner with individuals and groups to help keep City Rite of Way clean and litter-free. It closely mirrors the MODOC program of the same name. Since passage of this original ordinance, six groups have signed up to be adopters of various sections of City Rite of Way. This amendment expands the program to allow landscaping and plant maintenance in City Rite of Way and on other city property, including roundabouts. The amendment also moves the article from its original location as Article 5 in Chapter 15, which is health and sanitation, to Article 12 in Chapter 32, which is streets and sidewalks. The changes are highlighted in an attachment to your bill. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Janice, on 2012-42? Any debate or discussion from council members? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. At this point in time, we would entertain a motion for Resolution 2012-7. I want to ask our scouts to stick around just a little while. I've got something for you all right after this.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, that we take up Resolution 2012-7. All of those in favor of doing so, say aye. Oh, wait a minute. Never mind. Do you want to read it first? We've only been at this about a year and two months, right?
Yeah, it doesn't have a title.
Okay, and what's it about, roughly?
Workers' comp.
Okay, it actually has to do with workers' comp. Any questions, now that we have it on the floor, to speak about any questions on the resolution? Gail, would you like to tell us more about it?
Sure. This resolution authorizes the city to renew our workers' compensation excess insurance. The city is self-insured, but this puts a cap, this insurance puts a cap on our liability at $450,000 maximum per claim, or a million dollars aggregate.
Oops, excuse me, any questions of staff? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Okay, motion passes. Nothing under the informal calendar this evening. Next, we have under 19. We have one person that has signed up, Mr. James Wheeler. Reverend, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
For the record, please state your name and where you live, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
I'm Reverend James L. Wheeler, Sr. I live at 1116 Major Drive Residential Property, also at 1308 East Dunkland. I come before you today to petition the council to help with neighborhood improvements to the East Dunkland Park, the one right beside the old community center, in the back of the old community center. I brought this issue before the city administrator, and also I think Mr. Henry is aware of the request that we had made from the community, that we consider putting in that park, which a lot of people, a lot of our neighborhood people use there on the east side, a shelter with the bathrooms. Now, that's not unusual. I've checked, I've been a resident now, of this city now for over two years. I should say that, and I'm probably own a couple pieces of property here, residential properties, and my family go all the way back to 1783 in this state. And I could name them all for you, all the way back to, actually, 1708, when we came to this country, my fifth great-grandmother, Maisha. But I'm a Pettis County, Pettis County, Cooper County, and I have relatives all over the state, including right here in Jefferson City. The reason why I'm here is I have a son and a daughter close by in Columbia, and cousins and everything that lives right here in town. I know some of you are familiar with the Williams family. But anyway, this issue today is a neighborhood issue, in that it's been brought to my attention as a reverend, and I serve in the Second Baptist Church, but I'm an ordained elder of the churches of God in Christ, before I came here. But the Spirit of the Lord called me to Second Baptist Church, Reverend Sudditt's Church, down on Monroe, right down around the corner. But the issue's been brought to me by some of the congregation, the issue's been brought to me by some of the people in the neighborhood, the issue's been brought to me by, I think some of you know about Reverend Jackson, brought this issue before, I don't know if he brought it before the council or not, but asked a question that we consider putting a shelter there, along with a men's, women's restroom. There is none there. There's a lot of uses for that particular east side park right behind the old community center. I talked with the city administrator, and he said that there was a recommendation, but that recommendation will not fly, because it's going to add the cost to the operation of the old community center to that association that manages that. The east side, right across from the, you know, the tennis courts and whatnot, right there. In addition to the question from this council that you consider this matter, the good of that whole, this whole area of town, we would like to see also, like I see in a lot of these other parks, these little park benches put around in there. Even if we can't get the building, maybe we can get the bathrooms. Maybe we can, if we can't get the shelter, maybe we can just get the bathrooms, and some benches, you know, stationed around in there, so the people have someplace to sit when they come to play their games and do this and that. Also, I don't, you're not aware of it, but I'm also one of the handicap pitchers, I'm a disabled veteran, retired colonel, but I pitch in the Capital City Horseshoe Club, and we'd like to see us put a couple pits up there in that, in that park for horseshoe pitching. And myself, as a member of the Capital City Horseshoe Club, would certainly be responsible to the council to make sure that's maintained. That's our request. Appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor and council, letting me present it. Thank you.
Reverend, thank you for being here. Any questions for our guests tonight? Mr. Lubert?
Is that currently city park property?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do you have any idea, do you have a rough idea of the shelter you're looking for?
The same shelter that I've seen in East Miller, East Miller Street Park.
So it's an outdoor type?
It's outdoor type, open shelter. It's outdoor type, open shelter, just a concrete slab with a little top over it, and bathroom's down on one end.
Okay, thank you.
I will say this, for the benefit of the council, I was informed by the city administrator that the Parks and Recreation Director, Bill Lockwood, felt there was a vandalism problem in this neighborhood. There's a vandalism problem everywhere in this city. That is not, I don't think that's sufficient justification for saying, we don't want to put a bathroom in a, you know, 105 degrees today, gentlemen, you know? Praise the Lord. Thank you for your time.
Bob, go ahead.
Thanks for coming. I appreciate your comments. I think your requests are reasonable, and I would urge you to... I think your requests are reasonable, and I would urge you to see if you can get on the agenda of the Parks Commission and make the same request. I think you ought to do that.
I certainly do that.
With it being a city park, I would think that that would be the first place to look.
I didn't think I'd get very far with that, because I was already told he voted it down because of vandalism.
I would still make the attempt.
I understand, Reverend.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Wheeler? Go ahead. Nathan?
I just want to clarify, and I know Bill, I have a chance to talk here, too, but I did not tell you that Mr. Lockwood was opposed to this on the basis of vandalism in that neighborhood. I think what I said to you was, he was opposed to it because of vandalism of all of these restrooms, and it's a high maintenance expense. I don't think he singled out this neighborhood for vandalism.
Okay, okay, Mr. Nick, I misunderstood, stand corrected.
Mr. Lockwood?
If I could take this off, we're taking our park, planning the project, we need to save the city this afternoon at 5:00. I'll be there.
And just for future planning, it may not be a bad idea to include Phase One, Phase Two, as I was talking to Councilman Scrivener before this meeting. When we do these neighborhood parks, let's, let's put in, you know, what we need for restrooms at that point in time. I know you're getting ready to do one over by the new St. Mary's, correct? So, while you're there, might as well do it all at once. Reverend Wheeler, thank you so much for being here. It's always good to see you, and thank you very much for your service to our country.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics this evening? To my left, Ms. Carrie.
I wanted to speak about the presentation topic earlier from the supporters of the fire department, and I just wanted to say, I know being on the council, a lot of us are getting calls from constituents asking questions and how we feel about it, and so I just wanted to say publicly that I'm in support, and I know I'm personally encouraging people to try to take the politics out of it as much as they can, and really consider, of course, we can get the calculator and say, well, what's this going to save me and what's it going to cost me? We have commercial property, we also have a business that charges sales tax, so I completely see both sides of it, and I can get my calculator, and I can say, well, am I going to save more or spend more? And I hope that we can get beyond that. I think we need to all be educated and go on the fire department website and see exactly where the money is going, and we've all had those presentations, but to get to the bottom of it and say, at the core of my vote and my decision is the level of service and wanting to maintain what we have, and knowing that at the current level of service over the years and the near future, we won't be able to maintain that, and having the people come to the podium and talking about the life-saving services that are offered by our fire department, I just would want to make sure that, I would plead that the community would vote in favor of maintaining the level of service and keeping it at the highest level possible. So I feel very strong about that. At the core of my decision is going to be the level of service that we want to maintain, because we do have an excellent fire department. So I wanted to comment on that. And then I have one announcement, too, that I just wanted to congratulate Nathan on his award for having the attorney's, municipal attorney's award, and I can't remember the name of it, but congratulations on receiving that award.
Was it Jay Chek?
Lou Chek.
Lou Chek. We're actually going to be making that presentation in a couple weeks, we just found out today, but congratulations to Nathan on that. We'll be hearing more about it. And I'm assuming since you got that, you're better? Just teasing you, guy. You've had a long year. Get a little bit of humor out of you occasionally. Any comments over here on discussion topics? Seeing none? Anything over here to my left? Not letting Mr. Nathan talk. Any new business to bring for the council tonight? Any unfinished business for the council? Any scheduled reports? At this point in time, we would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. If I could have the scouts up front, please, along with your parents. Thank you all for being here.